Yeah, I wanted to ask why the street wasn't put back in the first place the way that it was. What was the reason?
We just never pushed it to proper.
Yeah, but why would you guys have to push it?
Yeah, I hear what you're saying.
I mean, why would the street not have been redesigned and redesigned and re... You know, there were no complaints about the fact that it was a cul-de-sac. Did you guys know ahead of time that it was gonna be changed before they did it?
I don't know. They were supposed to restore it a year ago.
Well, we all mentioned that under some of them, there's some wrong angles or whatever for the water.
Oh, yeah.
So they got fixed that.
It's along the whole street.
Right, so everybody out there going, "There is water," exactly.
Natively with possible reasons.
Right.
Till deep enough, a right angle or something.
Well, that's the other reason that you guys came up that that was not done correctly.
Make in progress.
Yeah, in progress.
Call a regular council meeting of September 21st, 2015 to order. We do have a forum. Let's please stand and pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All individuals are asked to either silence and turn off cell phones, pages, or other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approve all the agenda. Approve the agenda as posted in accordance with open meeting law. And here on place all agenda items on the table for discussion. What's the wish of the council?
I make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of the...
Got a motion by Mayor Zelka, second by Councilman Luttrellin, to approve the agenda with the addition of approving staff to work on the baseball, local baseball complex layout. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries approval of the minutes. Copy of the minutes for special work session meeting of August or September 8th, 2015, and the regular meeting of September 8th, 2015 are enclosed. What's the wish of the council?
Remove that we accept the minutes from the two meetings.
Second. Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilman Hanson, to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries approval of the bills. Approved checks 92,623 through 92,729, total of $463,096.24. Frank?
Okay, turn the page, one.
I have a question. McNeil Environmental Drug Pool membership?
We buy lots. Some of our employees have to be tested for drug and alcohol. We haven't participated in random drug and alcohol testing. And so we're a part of the pool, and that's a membership, an annual membership. We pay to be a part of the pool.
Thank you.
I was wondering if someone was gonna bring that up. I looked at that one. I thought the same thing. Oh, boy.
Page two. Sorry, another question. Are inspection services, was it just a really good month?
It was, and it's based on the permits that we actually issue, so yeah, it was very good.
I was looking at the top, Community Animal Hospital, the sign. That's the drug dog.
Yes, the king.
What's that dog doing? Have we heard much? I know it's getting up there in age.
I don't know its health. I just know the council agreed to pay for the nets for the dog.
This is more just the annual checkup than...
Nets that it receives, so yeah.
Page three.
That Clark station, that's all paid for now, per se now?
No, we still have the bill from Landmark Environmental for the engineering. And I think Greg can tell you that we, they did the testing and there were no pollutants found there. So that's a good thing.
Correct. Page four.
That's the final tally for the 2015 sidewalks is $26,390?
That was the first payout.
Okay.
Page five. Page six.
The final tally is on page seven, and Jeremy already read the approval numbers for which checks and the amount. I make a motion to pay this bill. There are bills for $463,096.24.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gushak, second by Mayor Zelka, to approve the bills. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries awards, donations, presentations, proclamations. Ain't done any tonight. Consent agenda. Airport Commission minutes, August 2015, received. Heritage Preservation Commission minutes, September 2015, received. Housing and Redevelopment Authority minutes, August 2015, received. Mayor's appointment. Robert Essie, Planning Commission, approved. Park Break and Tree Board minutes, August 2015, received. Police Department report, August 2015, received. Public Works Department report, August 2015, received. Seasonal bartender pro shop attendant, Michelle Stoner, approved. Waste water treatment facility report, August 2015, received. Golf course manager, amend job description and repost, authorize, approved. Authorize staff to work on baseball, local baseball complex layout, approved. What's the wish of the council on the consent agenda?
I would like to see, just bring up item B, appointment. Are we another person short now because we haven't done the person resigning?
I believe this is the replacement for Justin Bogonic yet.
Correct. Okay, so we're still looking, we'll be looking for another person because after January 1st, my understanding, when Doug, if Doug's gonna fill his terms, my understanding, then in January, we're gonna exit.
Okay.
Okay, that's all. Got a motion that I second?
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gushak, second by Councilman Canopla, to approve the consent agenda. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries Public Hearing Resoning CC-8 Operations LLC, 15616, 153rd Street. Open public hearing at 7:38. Greg, go to affidavit.
We do have the affidavit of publication as well as the many notices. This time we kind of added a duly used screen, notified this public hearing as well as the Planning Commission public hearing. And then we also notified all the residents for both of them. So tonight, you've got in your packet the report from the Planning Commission from that public hearing. Then obviously tonight we'd have this public hearing. The parcel that we're looking at is this parcel right over here. To give you perspective, this is Highway 10 with a 371 and Highway 10 split. 27 is down here. Walmart is in this corner. And so this is on the southwest corner of what would look at kind of the Fairgrounds complex over there. Fairgrounds does not currently own these southern three lots, but it's in that general vicinity. Right now, the way that the parcel is zoned, it's I-1 with a PUD overlay. And there's quite a history on how it kind of came about. This parcel, all the way over to the highway, was once under the Morrison County Agricultural Society's ownerships before they went into, the Fairgrounds actually sold this parcel, these southern three, and then they came into the PUD portion of it. With the PUD overlay, there's some very strict allowances what can be used in there. Now I'll just kind of read them off here. The activities on the property are, that can be on there right now with the overlay, is a golf course, clubs and lodges, minor recreation such as bowling alley, et cetera, essential services, horse care, hotel, motel, conference center, office buildings, utility facilities, restaurants excluding fast food, rural agriculture, and signs as permitted by city code. That parcel currently is up for sale. What generated this public hearing has been actually receiving a phone call regarding parcel as to what could be built over there. So he started digging into it and, you know, read off this list of what could be used over there. And as he was reading through it, it didn't make a whole lot of sense as to why this was included in the overall complex with the Fairgrounds. The Fairgrounds did pull together a master plan for their area, and it clearly shows that these three parcels have under different ownership, but yet they were included in the PUD. So once we kind of discovered that, we started the proceedings to remove the PUD from that particular parcel, knowing that it was for sale at the time, or currently is for sale, just to try to clean some of the things up for it. So tonight, obviously, we'd be looking at having the public hearing. The Planning Commission did have a recommendation to remove the PUD from that parcel there. And it was at a 4-0 vote, but tonight we'd be looking for the public's input on it once again.
Thanks, Greg. Open it up for public comment. Anyone from the crowd wish to speak?
Robin Hassel, 807 First Street Southeast, I'd like for Greg to clarify, if the overlay is taken off, what can it be used for then instead?
If the overlay is taken off, it could be used for anything that's allowed in an I-2 district. So currently, it has an I-2 underlying zoning, but with the PUD, it's specific to those, those particular uses that I've mentioned earlier with that overlay on it. Which it didn't make a whole lot of sense to have those requirements on it in the first place because it was pulled, it was sold before the master plan was completed for the Fairgrounds.
And there's two other parcels that are close by that that...
That are not owned by the Fairgrounds, correct.
Right, that also had this overlay.
On the south, yes.
And what is the reason why the overlay wouldn't be taken off those two particular parcels, but you want to do that with this one?
Those other two are not for sale currently, and this was the one that was discussed. So rather than, you know, bringing a whole bunch of them in at one time, we just focused on that one particular parcel.
So the reason that this was done is because of a possible purchase?
Somebody mentioned that this was for sale. We looked into what could or could not be used there. It was extremely limited in terms of what was allowed. It didn't seem to fit the general nature of the area. That's what prompted this proceeding right here.
I just want to make a comment that this property is in limbo. It's not, it's in the process of being sold to another individual, and yet we don't know. The public has no idea what the potential is, the potential use for that property is. I'm opposed to this, and I stated so at the planning and zoning meeting as well. And I am concerned that language is used, for instance, like Greg used earlier, that the city just wants to clean up some issues. I think that more transparency should always be given so that the public is fully aware as to what's really going on. Recently, we heard about another issue with the rezoning and there, an overlay was being put on property. So I think it's important that you explain to the public exactly what's going on and not keep information in the dark, like I think is happening right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Greg, just from my clarification. So you take that overlay off there, so I know what can go on in it, what can go on there now. You take the overlay off, what can go in there then? I mean, can you just throw out some examples of what kind of businesses could go in there or somebody bought that in?
It could be anything, anything that is similar to what you see up north in these areas, you know, in our industrial district. You know, you could, you could have a crest line, or you could have a lichen boat. You could have any industrial type of facility would be able to go there at that point in time.
But not a store?
You could put a store there as well, yeah. I mean, anything on I-2 or below would be allowed in those areas.
Just less limited.
Sure.
Was this all from when we were hoping it was gonna be a racetrack over there? That was all part of their plan to lay it out that way? And they hoped to lay out what was gonna be around it?
Correct, yep. And what was odd is that, you know, like I mentioned at the time, they had added these three, or they owned all of this land. They sold this portion and these southern three before the master plan was created for the Fairgrounds, but yet these three got included in the PUD overlay. Why that happened, I can't say, but I suspect it was back from when there was the racetrack potential in there, in that area.
So if those other two lots, if they decide to, or owns them, decides to sell that, then they're probably gonna come in and request that maybe not possible?
More than likely, yes. Now those two, these two here currently have cell towers on them, one on each of them. So that may have an impact on whether or not they sell them, but potentially they could come in and ask that same request.
Okay, 7:46, we'll close the public hearing. What's the wish of the council on rezoning?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gushak, second by Alderman Hercock, to rezon CC-8 Operations LLC. Discussion?
Why wouldn't we just do the other two lots at the same time?
We could. We were just looking at this one in terms of changing hand, changing use. So rather than muddy it up with what could happen on all three, we just wanted to discuss this particular lot here. But likely it could happen with those other two as well.
Would, if they all three, if we would've took all three of them, we would've needed an individual public hearing for each owner's parcel. So it really didn't make a difference.
True.
Well, thank you. This is a piece of vacant land. Do you have those structures on or parked?
There is a small building on that one. Let me see if I can find it here. There's a little white building down there that I don't know what it's used for, but you can see right there, there's a small structure on that particular lot currently. What it is, I have no idea.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries Resolution 2015-74, opposing 2016 levy adopt. City Minister?
As we talked about in the work session the last two meetings, we had talked about, in the regular meeting, we had a proposal in front of you for the levy to increase by 3%, 4%, or 5%. And you can do any, you can lower it, right, if you want. So the levy needs to be approved by the end of the month, the preliminary levy, by the end of the month, and the budget. We've got budget numbers in two, which is kind of the bottom line budget amount of work back there, filling all the blanks for you prior to the end of the year. Preliminary levy must be adopted by the end of September. Preliminary levy cannot be increased after it has received its approval by you. So it can be lowered. And the history of the city has been that the levy has been lowered over the years. So not to say that because it's at 3%, 4%, or 5%, or 2%, or whatever you set it at, that it can go up, it cannot. Sometime between November 10th and the 24th, all of the taxpayers of the city will receive what used to be called the Truth in Taxation, almost kind of a preliminary, what your taxes might be if the levy stayed at the preliminary level. Levy, all taxpayers receive that towards the end of November, and that gears them up for the public hearing. Public hearing is scheduled, proposed here for December 7th. December 7th, so I'll just verify that date. So in a nutshell, preliminary levy must be adopted by the end of this month. Final levy is adopted by the end of December. All of the numbers crunching will occur between now and then. And I would imagine that you would, and your new administrator, the finance director, department heads are gonna have a couple of budget meetings coming up in October, November, probably more likely November, in anticipation of your public hearing coming up in December. So there you are. Let us know what you'd like to do. You have resolutions in front of you, draft resolutions that will do either 3%, 4%, or 5% adjustment. Pick A, B, or C, which is starting at the low end, A, and the higher end, C. So it'll be up to you. The item B there is the Housing and Recreation Authority levy. That's a levy outside of your general levy. It's usually either HRA or EDA, with HRA in this case. And then the budget, as we talked about, as I mentioned, is kind of the bottom line budget amount. And then finally, the public hearing. So all four of these are in number nine, are tied together.
So what's the wish of the council on Resolution 2015-74, A, B, or C?
You know, I just wanted to add one more thing just for the public. Is at this point, because we don't have market values, we discussed this before. We don't have the market values. We don't know what a certain levy amount will mean for the tax rate. So it's a little hard to anticipate what that's going to be. If the values went up quite a bit in the community, or up some in the community, that softens the amount of that increase. So last year, you know, the levy went up 9.99%, just about 10%, yet our tax rate went down, and that's because our valuation went up so much because of the property that was annexed on our side of town. So, you know, it's hard to say what a 3%, 4%, or 5% levy will mean to a tax rate at this point. We should have a better idea as you move forward in this process.
Mr. President, I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2015-74-C.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zelka, second by Councilman Hanson, to approve Resolution 2015-74-C. Any discussion?
I would like to say in the past, when you have your budget discussions that we're gonna be coming up with, you have more of an understanding of how much money you actually need. Right now, it's kind of, we're understanding what you're presenting before us, but it's good to know you do have the money there. We cut a lot of stuff every year. We don't spend a lot of money on roads, which we wish we could, but yet we still try to keep this levy down. And that's why we've dropped it every year, from the original, you know, proposed budget to the final. So I feel more comfortable, like the mayor's, what he said about taking C, that's the one I'm gonna go for.
Mr. President, I would just repeat what I said at the work session, that our water treatment plant needs work. We voted to finance a study for around $167,000, which would be good for one year. I think we need to follow through with that plan and get done what we need to get done. And once we get all the information in, we can look at how we're gonna do that, if we'll do that as part of levy, or when we adopt the fees. And then possibly we could lower that levy from where we have it, at 4.99. And if we found out we needed more money, we put it at 2.99, and we find out we need more money, we can't raise it. Then what are we gonna do? So I don't want to waste $167,000 taxpayers' money.
Anyone else?
I understand the need to pay for the water treatment plant and some of the things that are going on. Whoever puts these deadlines together for us to choose this when we don't even know what rates are gonna be for next year ought to have a good kick in the shorts. Because it doesn't even make sense. I understand the need to have that so we can pull back. I will reluctantly vote for that, but I expect we're going to drop it because I think it should be paid for through usage fees and not for some of the people that don't use the water treatment plant.
Anyone else?
I agree with Brad, and I think that that discussion will take place as we move forward with how we're doing it. So I think that's just the way that we can do it right. And then if we decided, as a majority, to do it, more the usage fees, then we will be able to drop the levy some, would be my guess, where we have that option.
Well, as it is, Mayor, the difference between A and C is $71,000. We're sold a percentage. It sounds like a lot, it's not. And I don't know why we would want to handcuff ourselves when it comes budget time. we would wanna handcuff ourselves when it comes to budget time.
You know, I've always looked at it as, like line credit, you're gonna make your plan for loan, for line credit, if you use it, it's there, if it's not, you don't borrow it, so. Any other questions? We're good. Resolution, call or roll?
Boyam?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Zelka?
Yes.
Anfler?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Canopla?
Yes.
Here it is.
Resolution twenty fifteen dash seventy-five, proposed housing, HRA levy?
So resolution two thousand fifteen dash seventy-five would set the HRA, the Housing and Redevelopment Authority levy. This levy is set by statute, and it's a percentage of the, um, taxable market value. Again, since we don't have those taxable market values, we've set the levy at eighty thousand, the proposed levy at eighty thousand. That number will be able to come down once we know what the actual, um, tax capacity is. I believe we set our preliminary levy at eighty last year, and if I remember correctly, it came down to like sixty-six thousand or some such number.
Sixty-eight, probably.
Sixty-eight, okay.
What's the wish of the council on resolution twenty fifteen seventy-five?
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
Got a motion by Councilman Hanson, second by Councilman Liljegren, to approve resolution twenty fifteen dash seventy-five. Discussion?
How do you feel about this one, Brad?
Same way.
Resolution, call or roll?
Hurcock?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Zelka?
Yes.
Anfler?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Canopla?
Yes.
Boyam?
Yes.
Here it is.
Resolution twenty fifteen dash seventy-six, proposed two thousand sixteen budget adopt?
This resolution will set, um, the budgets for the general rep, general fund, special revenue and enterprise funds. Um, the budget numbers can go up and down, there's no restriction as to if those go up or down. Um, these are, I believe, a three percent over what we did last year, but again, once we have the final numbers, um, when we set our final budget, uh, we'll have that back in December, so.
What's the wish of the council?
I make the motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gushak, second by Councilman Canopla, to approve resolution twenty fifteen dash seventy-six, proposed two thousand sixteen budget. Any discussion?
But these can go up or down?
Yes.
We just have to have it approved by the state to need somebody to rule?
Yes, we have to have a proposed budget set by September thirtieth and submitted to the state.
But we can change it.
But we can change it, absolutely.
Welcome to city government.
Not just city, though.
Welcome to government.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call or roll?
Liljegren?
Yes.
Zelka?
Yes.
Anfler?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Canopla?
Yes.
Boyam?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Here it is.
Public budget meeting? All right.
Again, our, um, our public meeting to discuss our budget needs to be held between November twenty-fifth and December twenty-eighth, and then we have to have the information submitted to the states, I believe, by the thirty or thirty-first of December. Um, we typically here have had our budget meeting the first Monday of the month, uh, in conjunction with our regular meeting. Did talk to our new city administrator that will be starting, and he was fine having it that December seventh date, which is our first Monday. Um, so this would call for our public hearing on December seventh.
What's the wish of the council?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zelka, second by Alderman Hurcock, to approve the public budget meeting for December seventh, seven thirty in council chambers. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We got our reports.
Mr. President, um, I would like to report on some things that were happening in the community this last week. Um, first of all, I believe it was Wednesday through Friday was the thirty-fifth Annual State Historic Preservation Conference, which was held in Little Falls, and there was over one hundred and seventy participants from around the state of Minnesota in our community. And I'd like to thank some entities for their, uh, dedication and a lot of time spent in donation, and all the things that were provided. Uh, first of all, Franciscan Sisters for their use of the facility, Great River Arts for the use of their building, there is a preservation commission for, and all volunteers for their hard work, uh, Rich Carlson and Kevin Anderson for providing the class and space downtown, uh, Morrison County Historical Society, uh, Wirehowzer Museum, the Lindbergh Interpretive Center, Little Falls Chamber, Little Falls, uh, Convention and Visitors Bureau, Little Falls Business Association, Camp Ripley, Holy Family Parish, Minnesota Power for their tour of the dam, uh, facility. And, um, also I had comments from the Chamber exec yesterday, um, when we ran into her about the great job that it was done, and comments from downtown business people, uh, that, uh, appreciated the business, and there was a car show in conjunction, I believe, on Wednesday night. Um, so, a lot of exciting things. I attended a, three different, uh, events, and got to speak to them on Thursday morning, and they had nothing but great things to say about the community. And I talked to so many that, that said that they had gone through Little Falls before and never stopped and seen what the community has, so, what an amazing opportunity to have a conference here. It just makes you wish that we had the facilities to host four hundred and, and do bigger and better things, so, um, then also the Beyond the Old Ribbon had the, had an honor run on Saturday morning, uh, that's ran from, uh, the Ryan's Park, and also there was a rodeo in town this weekend, and then on Sunday was a camper at the open house that I believe had two to three thousand people attend, and, um, just a lot of great things and action going on in the community, uh, that I appreciate all the work that people have to do to have these things happen. They just don't automatically happen. That's it.
I don't have much to report on this because of this meeting, it was during school, and when you first start up the school year, you don't take off, but the Camp Ripley Veterans Trail Group met with, uh, the DNR at Lindbergh Park on Thursday, are gonna give me all the information that happened, and I'll pass it on to you. This is concerning the bike trail on the west side, so, uh, you'll give that information to me in the next week, I'll have it at the next meeting.
There's the community meetings Thursday at six thirty at the high school. I got it done correctly.
Six to seven thirty, it's in the sun.
Six to seven thirty.
Anyone else? Dan?
Well, I just wanted to mention, uh, your new city administrator will be starting work for the city next Monday. Um, I plan to, uh, probably be at your next couple of council meetings, wanted to go through a couple of council, uh, meetings with him. He's, uh, excited to be here, he stopped in today, and frankly, he's excited to have me around to, to help him through those first, uh, few weeks or month, uh, that, after he gets going, and, uh, he'll be helpful. Like to him, I wish I had that over my career, but, uh, I guess I change jobs very often, but, uh, it does help to, uh, to have some, some assistance. But I just wanted to mention that some of the public members who will be starting, and I'm looking forward to having John Marisol, who'll both be at the next, uh, couple meetings, and then after that, I will be, um, easing out of here and, uh, continuing to work in at least one other community, possibly two, so.
Well, I'd like to, thank you, Dan. We haven't always seen eye to eye, I hope we've been able to work through things, and it's been nice having you here, you took us through some hard times, I appreciate that. You offer a lot of wisdom and guidance, and you will be best, so, thanks for being there.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I agree with, uh, Frank. I, uh, stated similar at the, uh, community development meeting, uh, that Dan brought a lot of professionalism to us, and, uh, did get us through some tough things. We, I think we've made a lot of progress, I think we're going in the right direction, and, uh, I'm glad that he's gonna stick around for a little bit to help John get his feet wet, and thank you professionally and personally.
Yeah, appreciate it, Dan. And, you know, I've, I've mentioned to staff, and I think we have that, the understanding too, if there's some things that come up, uh, after John's here and you want some assistance, I'd be happy to continue to provide. I'm not gonna be around, you know, uh, the community much, but, uh, you know, with today's electronic, uh, communication capabilities and possibilities, it's, it's...